I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Town of Frazier Board of Trustees at blah blah, oh no, six forty on November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Could I have roll call, please?
Katie Fisher.
Louis Gregory.
Ryan Cirquevenic.
Arnold Quinn.
Katie Souls.
Eileen Waldo.
Now, the approval of the agenda, we'd like to make a few changes. One is moving Sharky's lease to just before the public hearing. And the other is to move updates before the executive session. And are there any other changes anybody would like to make? You have any questions about the executive session? We need to take the item off of the consent agenda, yes. Okay.
So moved with the changes.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So.
We've got these before. No, they just approved the the agenda, so now do the consent agenda.
Right. Okay. Thank you. A motion to approve the consent agenda with the changes.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Open, so now we have forum for anything that's not on the agenda. Is anyone in the audience? How about online? Okay, going one, two, three, three, two, one. And now we'll move on to Sharky's license agreement.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-three eleven oh nine Sharky's license agreement.
Second.
I think we need to make him mention that Katie is.
I'm recused on that one.
Why was it pulled out of the consent agenda?
Because it's Katie, so she could vote on the rest of the concern agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we need a motion to go into the public hearing for the budget. And the items.
I moved to open a public hearing for the budget.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then Lori, you're up. No, I'm fine. That's just for notes in case there are questions, just to help me. Okay, this is the budget that we'll be presenting and putting together with the budget message and sending to DOLA. We've been over the budget. I've met with the committee twice and the board has seen it. So a few of the things that we've reviewed. The general fund property tax ten thirty-one one hundred, the seven hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred and forty-four. Resolution HH was rejected by voters. And we will be receiving another December assessment before the end of the year. I don't expect big reductions at this time. So I think that one's gonna stay. Are the grants? As we've mentioned before, we had the great news for Clayton Court, we got a one point five million grant. We also get the two hundred thousand for the six W project for the shop up on the hill. And then I was a little optimistic and added an additional seven hundred thousand for grants. Because we have several more that we're still awaiting ruling on, but I'm optimistic we're gonna get them.
How much was the grant for the shop?
The two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so basically just enough to get it.
Engineering.
Plated.
Yeah, the engineering and planning is what we budgeted for.
All the construction documents, it's just kind of a first leg.
Still good.
It's progress. And we did get the the award for a hundred fifty thousand for a stormwater study. That is not a, there's no match required for the town. We got that from the the Winnie Gap Fund, which is managed by the Grand Foundation.
Wonderful.
Yep.
So that take place in the spring?
Uh, likely the summer. There's a lot of survey work that goes with that.
Okay. Be nice if they had eyes on the field. Then runoff. Right. Things running off and into the rivers and then. That's great.
Okay, and then, you know, moving down, um, the distribution from the Winter Park Building Department. I don't have any idea how many projects are coming in. I went a little conservative on the potential revenue from the building department. Interest earnings, I'm sticking with that because I don't see the Fed making decisions to lower interest rates probably before end of first quarter. They're still trying to cool the economy. And so the last report and things that I've been paying attention to, it will be a slow drought drawdown and there's no set timing when it could start. Of course, I'd like it before Christmas, but you know. So going down.
Can you give us the numbers, Lori?
Which?
What line you're on?
Oh, sure, sorry. I was on the interest.
Ten thirty-six one hundred.
Yep, that one.
Yeah, it's nice to take advantage of these current interest rates.
Oh, yeah. It's helping out throughout all the funds. When I do receive the interest distributions, those are distributed between all the funds.
Okay, cool.
So another note, item of note, the Frazier Winter Park Police Department, that was an increase. And that was due to the sixty forty split we have now due to the increased calls that Frazier's being asked to contribute for.
And that is an IGA amendment that freight, that I'm sorry, the Town of Winter Park is finalizing a draft for just to really reflect those changes and they will adopt those on December fifth and we'll bring that to the board on December sixth.
Awesome. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, that's the ten forty-one eight sixty-two.
Metrics they use others than calls? Are these calls into a you know, call center or these actual visits they make or?
The calls, they result in an actual visit. So the calls are just calls and they they actually send somebody out to investigate the call. If it's just a call and they're confused and they should be calling the fire department, the operator will redirect them. But these are actual calls that that have response to them.
And that's the only metric they're they're using to?
They have that metric. They also have an additional code enforcement officer that's coming onto their department as well. During the audit season, we will also be seeing a typically every year we have a credit that's applied to our account for the police department budget because they have never they haven't achieved full staffing in ever since I've been here, I believe. So we get that credit back at some point in the spring during the audit.
Did you say there's another court enforcement officer being hired?
Yes.
There's gonna be two?
Gonna be two.
No mercy, Katie.
Seen a lot of growth and a lot of response and part of their strategy with that as well as it seems like getting qualified people to come in to the code enforcement position is a good kind of conduit to get your foot in the door with with police enforcement. And then if you want to go to the full police academy to become a
A stepping stone.
A stepping stone kind of thing. So it works well because when they're doing code enforcement, they're obviously in code enforcement, but when they need support, support the other law enforcement officers, they can't. And I'll have I'll have a chief trainer speak a little bit more to that when we bring the IGA on December sixth.
And as I mentioned before, in a prior meeting and to the committee, there is a new general ledger account, ten four one eight six five. That is for Victoria Village, which will be instrumental in tracking all costs related to Victoria Village moving forward. And the remaining costs in there are the balance of the contract with that.
This also leaves the Frazier Housing Authority funds from the bedroom fees from the short-term rentals untouched to snowball until we see a, until the to the board sees a good use for those funds as well.
That's cool.
Right.
That Frazier Housing Authority Fund is the last item when your budget sheet.
For expenditures.
Very last section.
There, yeah, very bottom section, all the way down. Keep going.
Last page?
Yep.
Last page of the budget.
Okay.
Will be the Frazier Housing Authority.
So that will require Frazier Housing Authority action to
Awesome.
Yes.
Right.
Any questions, anybody?
I like the budget message. I thought that was well done. It's exciting. I mean, read about all the good things been happening here and the money coming in from grants and projects coming down the pipe. It's great.
And the board's budget priorities are all in there. The work on the town hall. All of the priorities listed from the priority meeting, the first one that we had.
With the exception of the ones that were not deemed.
Yeah, the ones that were not deemed important.
Was the the major church renovations.
Yeah.
Which we'll do a workshop on site over there next year at some point.
Budget for that in the future. ADA compliance on the bathrooms should be really good. But there is the back bathroom and that's ADA.
Right, they're pretty narrow, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so for the town hall, the snow shed and their new ramp and that's included, only the high priority.
Can you define some of these acronyms? I'm not familiar with some of them like the P A, P A Y T.
Pay as you throw bags? Those are the pay as you throw bags for the drop.
Okay.
Those, that's the revenue from the purchase of the disposable bag, or not disposable, excuse me, those are the other ones. Those are the big yellow bags that they purchase at Safeway, Murdochs, and Ace Hardware.
Okay, yeah, if you could just spell that out, it's I'm not familiar with some of these, that one, and then there's another one in here that W T H P?
Walk through History Park, that's the
Not there.
Right.
At HTA, there used to be a bunch of sculptures there. Well, there's some sculptures.
Down there.
There are some sculptures.
Yeah, yeah, there's, I think, quite a few there still.
That's where Headwaters is?
Yes.
And then Byers Vista S I D?
Big line.
N thirty-seven, a hundred?
N thirty-seven, something.
I mean, it doesn't have any funds attached to it, but.
Thanks, I don't even know what that is.
Some of these line items.
That's unused.
Are unused and are placeholders. And these are things that because DOLA has seen this budget for year after year, I am trying to comply with everything DOLA has seen before. So I haven't made a lot of changes except for the one for Victoria Village that I reactivated, a general ledger account. And my concern is, is I just don't want to get DOLA's attention right now. So this is the exact template that's been used since this template's been started used, which is like from fifteen years ago. And I kind of like keeping DOLA happy.
Well, I mean, that's fine. I don't care if you leave it in there, but if you could just define your acronym so people know what it is.
Sure. What is S I B? Does anybody know?
Special Interest District.
Special.
Special Improvement District.
Byers Vista. It's probably something that's grand.
It's where the library is.
Okay.
Yeah. That little subdivision.
So with the the HCA memorandum of understanding with the Headwaters Trails Alliance, their cost has not increased since two thousand twenty-one, so looking at the same cost allocation for that. Building Department. That is a, we actually have more revenues than expenditures for the building department to budget, so it's really just about approving those revenues, which is
So where are you looking, Michael?
I was looking at the agenda, but I was gonna find it here for you too. That is ten thirty-four six hundred. So that is just a surplus in revenues that we get from any expenditures related to building inspections and building apartment processes. Lori had touched on the the property taxes. We will get a new validation in December. So those numbers may change a little bit, but we're not anticipating anything large. And then the last two items, Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash eleven dash eleven summarizes all the revenue accounts and the expenditure accounts for each fund. And reflects everything that you see here in the budget for the two thousand twenty-four draft budget.
So any questions on any of those?
Yeah, I had a question about the Frazier River Trail. There's a six hundred or sixty thousand dollar budget item for a bridge replacement. Where, which bridge are you talking about? Does anybody know?
No one in particular. That was a carryforward from two thousand twenty-three. That there are potential for needs for replacement. I don't have a specific bridge.
The the specific bridge that I'm aware of from a search inspection that did not meet like ADA compliance based on the lift that came up with was the bridge that's right next to the HTA building that crosses that we actually walked across when we did that workshop downtown. That bridge is needing some help. So we, but we typically do a bridge maintenance to all of our bridges or most of our bridges every year.
You have to replace it or just modify it?
Replace planks, reinforce the structural integrity of the bridges. Some pieces just need replacements, some of them need more of an overhaul, but this is just basic maintenance throughout the year for lumber and concrete.
Okay, so it should say bridge maintenance, not replacement. There's not a bridge that we have to tear down and replace, right?
Well, sure, for that one next to the HTA, it might actually require a replacement.
That might require full replacement.
They're they're looking at that, I know that.
Okay.
Anything else from the board? Anything from anyone in the building? Any questions, comments? How about online? I guess not. So we're done with our public hearing?
Yeah.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Mm-hmm. Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we need a motion to accept the budget. And there's
Approval for budget, great.
Five resolutions that go with that, we can we can approve them all in one one motion. If that suits anybody.
I move to accept the two thousand twenty-four public hearing, sorry, the budget, two thousand twenty-four budget, along with the five resolutions attached.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and our next discussion and possible action is regarding an MOU with KFFR.
All right, how's everybody doing today?
Great, how are you?
Oh, I'm fantastic. Ah, just made the eighties dance party promotion, so I've got dancing all night long.
Oh, fun.
You all should come, it's December second.
Well, it's PYT, I'm like, pretty young thing, Michael Jackson, like, duh, like, everyone knows.
Ah, so do I have boost control? All right, well, I didn't want to bug you guys with a bunch of words and things, I just thought I'd show you nice pictures. Let's see. If I can change, there we go. All right, so I'm, I'm coming to you today. Kind of in a different role. Last year, of course, you helped fund my position and this year we wanted to come back with to you and say we want to do more for the Town of Frazier. And we have been talking with Sarah, of course, about what can we do? And how can we engrain the Town of Frazier in KFFR? And so, you know, oh, let me go back right here. I think this is the picture that kind of explains everything, but you know, see. It's just her, yeah. We had a great Halloween party and they show up. Nobody was at our Halloween party, no. Um, it was fun. You can see here is a bunch of the KFFR.
DJs.
Uh, over seventy people came to the studio. We had a live broadcast. It was kind of an old radio drama. And the reason I wanted to show you this picture is that this is happening in the Town of Frazier, right? And I think that's a good thing. We think that our relationship between Town Frazier and KFFR can really explode and do some cool things in the next year. Of course, we have a big studio and we are going to continue the Sound of Grand County. Even events that are in the Town of Winter Park, we bring them to Frazier. This is the Comedy Festival and we hosted that at the town or at KFFR Studios. I wish you could see these kids, they're pretty fun. And of course, we bring kids on the radio. There's a bunch of kids.
Yeah.
The DJ Pancake?
Do you see DJ Pancake in there?
Yeah, there's, I was listening the other day to his DJ Pancake and DJ Waffles.
I like it. Oh, they're probably on Sundays, yeah. Yeah, we air, you know, you guys mentioned the the sculptures over at by the HTA. So the kids last year from Frazier Valley Elementary wrote different bios on each one of those and we're airing those on the air every Sunday night from six to seven, so definitely tune in to that. Uh, let's see, what else? I want to quick show you. We also have remote broadcasts and that's one thing that we really want to offer to the Town of Frazier in this next year. We're doing a Sunday Storytime for the kids. Frazier Valley Rec District uses us and comes into the studio often. Of course, we have businesses like Joe Roykers. Can't see that, but there's Maria Chavez, Stephen and I promoting it. So, and then we, of course, have bands and music. So what we're asking for with Sarah's help is basically twenty thousand dollars to do several things. Number one, we are going to be Sarah's right-hand person for the events Fire and Ice and the Frazier mural festival. Last year, we weren't at the Fire and Ice Festival. We thought we should be and we think that we can bring a lot of excitement to that. And then the Frazier mural festival, we were only there one day and at the mural festival, I was talking to Sarah, like, you know, we really need to formalize something so that we can mark our calendar and make sure that we have those dates designated for the Town of Frazier. And that's what really this is about is like, let's make an agreement now and you can guarantee that KFFR coverage is going to be there. And of course, we're going to give you the best possible package that includes online recognition through our online streaming platform. This year, we are going to break the twenty thousand mark of twenty thousand unique IP address. Uh, this year, we are going to break the twenty thousand mark of twenty thousand unique IP addresses logging in to listen to our. Uh, radio station, and those are second homeowners. Those are um, yeah, it is great. We're really excited about that. Yes. Uh, last year was sixteen thousand or no fourteen thousand. So we've grown by six thousand this year. Um, and this next year, we have big plans to spread throughout the entire community. Uh, we have. Uh, gotten. Tower space over at Winter Park Resort that's going to bring a new frequency. It's going to be eighty nine point one. And then we're working with Mountain Parks Electric to bring eighty eight point three to the rest of the county, except Grand Lake, which we're working on that for the next year. So really big growth, and we want to make sure the town of Frazier is in there. The other thing I want. Want to reiterate is next year is a big election year, we all know. Um, and we want to make sure that. KFFR is the center of democracy and transparency in this valley. All of you are invited to come on the radio station. We're doing a brand new. Uh, segment every Wednesday from four thirty to five called Public KFFR Public Affairs. Um, so far, we've had. Uh, Patrick Brower's been on there. We just had people from the YMCA on there. Um, we've had. Um, Maria Chavez that you just saw on there. And so we want to. At least have you guys there four times during this next year and talking about the things that the town of Frazier are doing. And then we also want to be there to help host a community forum um, on the election issues. We did one this year. Um, we did have Steve. From Frazier Valley Arts and Barry from the Frazier Valley Distilling talking about the ballot initiative. Um, we're neutral. We just want to make sure that that transparency is available and that people learn it and learn about the issues. Um, so that's basically what we're asking for today. Um, I believe Sarah has it in her budget. Uh, we just wanted to make sure that you guys know everything that we're doing. Um, and. I also wanted to personally invite you over to the station for our public affairs shows coming up in the next year. I can also show you more fun pictures. Let's see. Oh, yeah, I don't know. What am I doing wrong?
There they go.
Oh, there it is. Uh, we're gonna, of course, help with the branding campaign too, and make sure that that information. We had Sarah. We had uh, Sarah on the public affair show talking about the branding campaign. Um, and of course, I'll be there on Friday, and we're excited to see the new logo. What else can I show you? Fun stuff. Anyways, any questions, thoughts, concerns that I can answer or address?
So, uh, Frazier Valley Media.
Frazier Valley Community Media is the name of our nonprofit, yes.
Oh. Okay.
When we're doing this as KFFR. Um, as we expand. The signal, though, we're gonna have two radio stations in the. Other one is, I think we're leaning towards KFWP, um, because KFFR was supposed to be. KF Frazier, and then KFWP would be the other one. Um. But we might need to change our name a little bit for, because we're going to be Grand County Community Radio in the future. And we're looking at that. That's probably about a year out. Yeah, Frazier Valley Community Media is our nonprofit. Will eighty nine point one go over the pass? Um.
That's a tricky one.
We are limited by what the FCC can do. So um, or FCC limits what we can do. So we, if you go over the pass, basically, once you hit Clear Creek County. Uh, there's other stations that would interfere. So, yes, the signal will reach there, but we actually have to put in what's called a null to prevent that from happening. So that we don't bump into other radio stations that have that frequency or that area. But we do think. With the new design, that you'll be able to get. Our radio station from the top of Bertha Pass to the top of Rabbit Ears, which is kind of the big section.
It's a big area.
That's great.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Very cool.
Big county.
It is a big county, yeah. And we we have some. Random thoughts of potentially expanding into Walden at some point, but um. Because Jackson County doesn't have any radio station. Further down the line.
They should do their own.
What's that?
They should do their own.
I know, right?
They're very isolated.
I had a question about the candidate forum.
Yeah.
Is that a? Misprint or typo that six point three says October twenty twenty four, the election's in April.
That was.
Okay, so it's gonna be in March or something. Okay.
Good catch them.
And so. Eighty eighty nine point one, is that what it is?
That's our new frequency, yes. Eighty nine point one. Um, we should have that online by June of next year is the hope. And and it'll actually work. If everything goes right, we we're dealing with Forest Service right now. Um, and you know, that could always cause delays. But um, we do have an agreement with Mountain Parks Electric to use one of their towers over on Grouse Mountain outside of Partial. And that's that will actually turn into eighty eight point three. And that will hit Kremlin, Hutsofer, and Granby. And then eighty nine point one will hit Winter Park and Frazier. Interesting. So we're gonna kind of lose eighty eight point three over here, but it will um. We'll still be broadcasting the same programs, just on a different frequency. Hard with all these mountains in the way.
Right. Well, of course, we're still always hoping that there'll always be that Frazier Free Radio.
Yes. Absolutely. Well, and that's something.
Cover all those other communities.
Right. No, and that's definitely something. Um, part of the MOU that I sent in. Is working with Sarah, working on that messaging. Um, if that's something that. You know, the town is really passionate about. I think that's something that we could definitely promote.
That's definitely, yeah. I I almost drove off the road the other day when Parks, of all people, Parks Thompson. Sat here on Parks Thompson at KFFR here in Winter Park, and I went.
Parks.
Parks.
That's it. We're not funning you next year.
I have not seen him since.
I saw him today.
I'm looking for him. Okay, so it's. Meaning it's in there is. Budget. Does it mean it's in what we just approved?
That's correct. So ten thousand of that will come out of the main marketing budget, and then the remaining ten thousand will be split between Fire and Ice Marketing. And Frazier Mountain Mural Festival Marketing.
Great. We have the MOU. Yeah, to approve the MOU. No, we we haven't done that yet. Right, okay.
Right.
No, it wasn't.
The budget. Yeah, it's.
We're out of the public that was. So, can I make a motion?
Yes.
Yes, to approve resolution twenty twenty three eleven seventeen memorandum of understanding with KFFR.
Second.
Frazier Free Radio. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
All right. Well, thank you so much. We look forward to working with you in the future. Um. Please reach out anytime if you guys have an issue that you think needs addressed in the public forum. Um, you, we want to bring you on a minimum of four times this next year. So. Uh, please keep that in mind, and we're really passionate about creating transparency in government. So. Um, please don't forget about us, which I'm sure you won't.
Okay, thank you. Actually, in the memo, it says a minimum of six times.
All right.
Nice thing about having those. Okay. Next is the draft. Ordinance five oh four establishment establishment of Downtown Development Authority and calling an election.
So I just wanted to introduce. We have Dalton Kelly with us from Butler Snow to talk about um, more about the DDA formation and introduce. Uh, draft language for an ordinance and ballot measure. Uh, we also have online with us Troy Bernberg um, from. Northland Securities. Did I say that right? I don't think I did. Um, thank you. And then Phil Shrum from uh, Downtown Colorado incorporated to help answer any questions that might come up.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Uh, Dalton Kelly with Butler Snow, and we've been working with the town on uh, the ordinance and the ballot questions for the formation of a downtown development authority. I know you've received some presentations from Bill with DCI and Troy uh, with uh, Northland Securities, and so I'll be brief with uh, my presentation on the DDA part. Just want to cover some high points, and then we'll dig into the ballot language in particular. So, as far as our agenda, just the overview, we'll cover what uh, downtown development authorities, DDAs are, what they're authorized to do. The procedures for forming a DDA, which is um, the ordinance that will come before you on December sixth that you have a draft of tonight. Um, we'll talk a little bit about who controls the DDA and what oversight the town retains. Um, the revenue raising powers, and then we'll dig into what's in the ordinance, those key provisions, and we'll talk about the debt question and the formation question. The formation question is rather straightforward, so I think we'll spend most of our time with the the debt authorization. So as far as DDAs, so DDAs are formed pursuant to statute. The section's up there for you, um, in case you want to take a, take a look at it. Um, DDAs are a separate political subdivision embodied corporate, and they're specifically designed to halt deterioration of property values and structures within the central business district. Um, to haul or uh, prevent blight, and then to assist the the town. Um, with the development or redevelopment of the central business district and the overall planning uh, to restore or provide the continuance of health within the DDA district. Um, the initial boundaries of the DEA district are set in the ordinance uh, that calls the election for the formation. And so you'll notice in the draft ordinance, there's a legal description and a map of what the proposed DDA boundaries would be. Um, as far as discussion goes, if there's anything in there that you wouldn't want in the boundaries, or um, or if. There's something in there that um, you have questions about, um, we would want to get that resolved because um, that ordinance sets what the initial boundaries will be. Um. Things can be, uh, properties can be added later to the DDA, but it requires a petition from the landowner. And so that's one of the things with the initial boundaries is. You want to set them in a way that's advantageous to your central business district and what you envision using your DDA for. Um, because after that, trying to get somebody in requires uh, them coming forward with the petition, and then the DDA board approving it, and then this body approving it. Um, and so that's just, um, you know. Highlighting the importance of the boundaries and the ordinance. So DDAs, what are they authorized to do? Uh, well, under the statute, they have all powers that are necessary and convenient to carry out the purpose of the DDA Act. Except is limited by the act or in the ordinance uh, forming the DDA. Um, the main purpose is to uh, plan and propose uh, development plans for public facilities, and then to actually uh, in connection with the public facilities. Improve land, construct improvements, um, and maintain buildings and operate the improvements. Um, public facility definitions up there. As you can see, it's rather broad. Uh, includes but not limited to, and so it kind of gives you a list of things that would constitute a public facility. And then uh, with statutory interpretation, things of that nature would be in the not limited to category. Uh, typically, you know, around the state, you see DDAs working on uh, all sorts of things from, you know, facade programs, uh, streets, sidewalks. Um, you know, uh, different building structures, parking garages, things of that nature. So um, pretty broad as far as the public improvements that can be taken on. As far as the organizational procedure goes, that's really what we're starting to get into uh, with the discussion tonight. The organization of a DDA is started by an ordinance adopted by uh, the Board of Trustees. And uh, the Board of Trustees submits the question of organization to the qualified electors. We'll touch on what a qualified elector is here in a moment. The ordinance sets the initial boundaries, and then you're also allowed to submit. Any taper questions, uh, if it's a taper election, since it's your uh. Regular local election, you can submit taper questions at that election, and so we can submit a taper question with us, and that's why we're talking about the. Uh, the debt authorization being submitted as well. As far as a qualified elector goes, a qualified elector is a resident, a landowner, or a lessee of the proposed downtown development district. And so. Those boundaries we talked about, it would be your owner's lesses and uh. And residents in that those proposed boundaries. Um, the one thing the statute does do is if it's a non-natural purpose, uh, person, so you have, you know, businesses in there, uh, they can designate a person to vote. Um. By official action, um, they have to designate. So somebody can't vote twice. It's one person, one vote. So even if you're already qualified, so if. Um, you know, if I live there, and then I also have a business, I can't be the designated voter for both myself and the business. It's one or the other. So the business would have to designate somebody else. As far as the governing body goes, um, there's a little flexibility here. Um, and um. We could talk about best practices, especially I know we have um, representative from DCI on the line, and they work with a lot of DDAs too, and so they can talk about best practices. Um, but it can be anywhere between five and eleven members. Um, a majority of the members have to reside or own property in the DDA district. And at least one of the members has to be a member of the the governing body. So one of the members of the Board of Trustees will also sit on the DDA board. Otherwise, um, those members are appointed. Um, to be appointed, um. You either have to be a member of the governing body, or you have to reside, be a business lessee, or a real property owner in the DDA district. Uh, managers, agents, and employees of um, businesses having their place of business in the district. Um, they are eligible for appointment to the board. Um, and. You know, it makes sense. They're going to be your main stakeholders in a lot of these things, um. Given where um, DDA districts and their purposes are. Um, officers and employees of the municipality are not um, eligible to be appointed, so only members of the Board of Trustees are. Um, this comes down the line, but if. If so, the TIF clock uh, initially runs for thirty years. You have the ability to extend that in the future. If and when that's extended, there are requirements for expanding the board, and that brings in the county and a couple other um, representatives. But we're talking, you know, thirty years in the future at that point. Um, as far as retained oversight uh, by the town, as as I said, you know, the DDA is its own political subdivision. It has its own board. But there is continued oversight from the town. Um. Initially, uh, the town appoints the initial board and continues to appoint the board throughout the uh, entirety of the DDA, and so that's a level of control from. From the town. Um, each year, the DDA submits its budget to the town for approval, and so you have oversight of the DDA's budget and what's going on. Um, any bonds, loans, advances, or other indebtedness that are payable from the tax increment have to be incurred by the town, and that'd be pursuant to that debt question. Unless, um, and this just happened this year, um, it's a new provision. Unless the town and the DDA enter into an uh, intergovernmental agreement that allows the DDA to do some borrowing based off that uh, special fund where the tax increment goes. Um, in which case, your oversight over that type of borrowing is regulated by that intergovernmental agreement. That provision came into law this year. Excuse me. Just became effective, and so I'm not aware of anyone who's done it yet. I know some municipalities that are talking to their DDAs, some of these established DDAs about. Um, exploring that IGA power. Um, but generally speaking, the town will oversee any borrowing from that the DDA wants to do. And then um, ultimately, the town is still the body that zones approved develop approves developments. It's your downtown plan. It's your master plan, and so. You still have regulation over those things. And the town approves the plan of development. I should have listed that on there, but that's also the DDA's governing uh, document.
Dalton, on your previous slide?
Yeah.
Uh, the DDA must submit its proposed budgets to the governing body. Body. Is that an annual budget that's approved every single year?
Right, yeah, that is an annual.
One time, boom. Good luck for the next thirty years. It's a uh. Every year, there's that control mechanism in place for the board to have that.
Yep, that is correct. E- every year, each year, they submit a budget, and it'll have their O and M. It'll have their their capital plan. So. You're, yep, you're gonna have a look at it every year. So thanks, Michael. That's a, that's a great point to highlight. As far as the DDA revenue raising powers go, um, the main source of revenue is uh, tax increment, um. Known as TIF. Um, you can have property tax increment. You can also have sales tax increment. Um, what's going to be included will be set forth in your plan of development. Um, the tax, uh, the TIP provision, the tax increment provision lasts for thirty years unless the municipality decides to extend it uh, for twenty year terms. There are some additional strings that come with that extension, given that we're on the initial one. We're talking about the thirty right now. TIF can be used to pay the principal of the interest on and the premiums due in connection with bonds of loans of. Or advances to or indebtedness incurred by the municipality. And so this is something that's a big hang up often with DDAs. The TIF is available to pay for debts, and so. And so what you'll see is a lot of creative schemes around the, the state as far as creating an indebtedness to access the TIF. And there are lots of ways to do that, especially for, you know, small projects, we need to buy some benches, some trashcans. It's just a matter of creating an indebtedness of, of the town to do that. But that's why the debt question is important. The statute requires any pledge of the TIF to be approved by voters. And then there's also the Tabor requirements for indebtedness that we're all familiar with. And so that's why that component is very important, given how the TIF has to, can only be spent. Development project is very, very broadly defined, and it's basically anything, undertakings or activities under the plan of development. Where we're at right now is talking about formation. If the voters approve formation, then you approve a plan of development, and so that would kind of be your next step. And that document sets forth more what the general plan for this area is going to be, and kind of what kind of activities the DDA and the municipality will work on in there. As I mentioned before, any TIF, TIF can be used to pay indebtedness of the municipality unless there's this intergovernmental agreement. And examples of indebtedness are, you know, loans, bonds, a lot of what you see are cooperation agreements. Sometimes the city's taking something on, and there's a cooperation agreement of city fronts money, TIF pays back the city, and that's how, how you're doing it. There's also development agreements, so developer comes in and you say, hey, you do, you restore this building, we'll give you the property tax increment off that building up to this amount. And that would be your indebtedness for that, so for that obligation. So there's lots of ways to do this, it's just a matter of you have to have that, that sort of indebtedness to be able to use the TIF. And then at the end of this, so at the end of the TIF term, or when, at the end of the TIF term, you pay off your bonds. If there's anything left, or if every, all your bonds, loans, obligations have been paid, if there's anything left. You redistribute the, the tax increment in the special fund to the taxing bodies. Generally speaking, most DDAs, and this is also in the URA statute, they make sure they get those funds spent before that happens. But that's what happens if you have leftover money. The other revenue raising powers, DDAs can get donations, and oftentimes, especially in the early stages, municipalities will give a contribution for some administration to get the DDA going. Because you don't have any tax increment coming in in the first couple of years. DDAs are authorized to levy a property tax, while the city levies it on behalf of the DDA, but a property tax of five mils. That's not a question that we're putting to voters right now, unless this board would like to see otherwise. But right now, that's not being proposed, but that powers always are always out there. And then money is borrowed. And to be repaid from other funds received is another avenue. And so what a lot of DDAs do, and there's a specific provision for this, is if you have a borrowing, let's say you have a line of credit for a million dollars. You're going to take, you know, 5% of that is reserved for admin of the project, and then you're going to spend the rest of it on the project construction itself. And that's another way of kind of getting some admin funds. DDAs are also authorized to fix rates, fees, and tolls and charges for properties they owned and things that are controlled. Given the types of buildings, unless the DDA is running kind of a business-type operation, it's kind of hard to do these. But I know there are some that own some properties and rent them out, and that is a revenue stream. Wanted to emphasize this last point because it will get into our discussion of the, the debt question. But the town has no liability for DDA bonds. They're a single source of revenue, and it's the tax increment. And so the town is never on the hook for the DDA bonds. So we've talked a lot about, you know, tax increment being the main source of revenue. And so just a little bit more on what tax increment is. And so when you adopt the plan of development, the base, it could be sales tax, it could be property tax, it could be both. Those are frozen in time, and so if you have something that's generating zero sales tax right now, that base is zero. And everything that, all the sales tax generated above zero, then is increment. Property tax gets a little bit more confusing because there's a lot more going on, and everything has a little assessed value. But generally speaking, the way it works, we have a little example here. If the assessed value before you adopt the plan of development's a million dollars, and then you adopt the plan of development, and that assessed value goes up to $10 million. All the taxing entities will levy their mill levies, that first million dollars, all those revenues, that base, that still goes back to all the taxing entities. So the county, the town, the school district, they still get basically what they're getting today. And that's adjusted for biannual reassessment, and we have a graph on the next page to talk about, show how this works, helps illustrate a little bit. And then that $9 million, that's above the base, your mill levies on that, that's what generates the increment that goes into the special fund. And, you know, the idea is, you wouldn't have had that but for the, the investment. And so that's all new money, and that revenue is going back in to develop the authority.
Of course.
Yes.
So then the baseline is on the land. And the increment, is that based on the improvements?
So if there's already improvements on the land, that would be part of the base. But if improvements come later, that, that would probably contribute, that would contribute to, that would contribute to the increment, even in the most conservative of, of looks.
So is it kind of fair to, is it appropriate to say that the increment is based on the improvements?
Yeah, that's the primary driver. There's a little bit of, and this is before the Colorado Supreme Court right now, on whether just general value attributable to the land. So let's say nothing happened, you just adopt a plan of development. You know, is the increase in assessed value due to general increase in assessed value? Or is that due to there being this plan of development, and does that go to the base or the increment? That's getting hashed out right now by the Colorado Supreme Court, but the improvements themselves, the new improvements, that's, that's your increment, that's your generator.
Thank you.
Don't know what I did there, okay. Okay, and so here's, here's a look at property tax increment, because it is a little different than just the idea of frozen-in-time base. You do get that biannual reassessment step up, and so every two years, and that's the stair step you see. Everything below those red steps, that still goes to the taxing entities. Everything between the green and those red steps, that's your increment. And as trustee Solis said, that's really attributable to the new improvements, the new assessed value that's getting generated in the, in the downtown development authority area.
I'm sorry, what is a stair step? Why is that increasing the way it is? I mean, maybe a little simplistic, but how is it? Why does it go up like that every two years?
Yeah, and it doesn't necessarily have to go up, but as we've seen over the last few years, especially this last cycle of reassessment. Generally speaking, property values go up, the assessor sets a higher value, so that's why you see it go up. The statute contemplates that when we do general reassessment, essentially what they're trying to do is say, you know, is, is this just general? The idea of keeping the base at what the taxing entities would have got had nothing happened. You would get, you know, like this year, assessed values have jumped through the roof, and, you know, some increases are at like 40%. And so if that's just attributable to what's going on everywhere, you would still get the benefit of that, that's the idea. So that's why you see that stair step, it's kind of your general reassessment increase in value. That could be flat, and there's some properties, particularly, you know, if something's like vacant land that sat there a while, and you've seen the assessed value over the years, and it's either been flat or gone down. That base might not step up every year. It's just kind of, and this is, this is where there's been a lot of tension between municipalities and county assessors, is what belongs in the base and what belongs in the increment, and what is that base? And so they have a handbook, they have statutory direction, they determine what the base is. Generally speaking, it does go up a little bit.
So is that what's before the Supreme Court?
The way it's being calculated, that's what's before the Supreme Court right now, yeah. There's a dispute that they're putting a lot more in the base than. They're not attributing it to the, the increment, and they're putting it in the base, and so it's going more to, back to the taxing entities than the, it was a URA in that case, Urban Renewal Authority. But that's what's before the Supreme Court right now.
You're probably going to address this, but can you remind me, at what point is that baseline established, at what date?
It is the date you adopt the plan of development, assuming the plan of development has a tax increment provision in it. You could always adopt a plan of development without a tax increment provision and amend it later to add one, and that would be your date. The importance of that date is, that's when your TIF clock starts, that's when the base gets set, and then that's what we're running off this whole time. And so you see it more with urban renewal, since downtown development authorities have the ability, you can extend that clock with urban renewal authorities, you can't. And so sometimes you'll see a city adopt an urban renewal plan, and then without a TIF provision. And then five years later, when they have a development coming, they'll amend the plan to, to start that TIF clock. And so it's a little bit strategic that way, because this is more than you want to know, some, some. There are some municipalities that try to be clever in the past and say, it's a springing TIF, and, and when we say it goes, it goes, but it was always in the plan. And the Court of Appeals said, no, it's once you adopt it with the, with it in there, it's in there. And so, you know, that's just a point of discussion when, you know, if voters approve this and we get to your plan of development, do we put the TIF provision in right away? Do we amend it later? When do you want to set the base? When do you want to start collecting it and kind of getting your, your DDA some of that seed money? So.
But not the start of a DDA, that doesn't.
No, it's, it's when the plan of development is adopted with the TIF provisions. Yep, good questions. Okay, and so that's kind of the overview of DDAs. Any questions about DDAs generally? If not, I'll jump into the ordinance. And I, we can always come back if something comes up.
So one thing that I thought was useful for myself to learn, and I think Sarah, as well, we're kind of going through these processes, the base value, the base valuation continues to go up. So if you're looking, if you take like the fire district, for example, the boundaries that we have the DDA within is not going to freeze their revenues. Their base valuations will continue to build, but there will be an increment that is basically a result from the reinvestment of some of these revenues. That is where we get the revenues for the DDA. So like for a fire district, their revenues, their valuations, their property tax revenues from the, within the DDA boundaries will continue to increase. But the difference is, when we do this, the idea is that the reinvestment of these property taxes from these increments allows us to grow at a faster valuation rate. If that makes sense. So the base valuation, the, the, the revenues for special districts that this, that are within the DDA boundaries that are shown. Their base revenues will continue to get, to increase, this is not going to freeze the revenues for 30 years, their revenues will continue to increase. That was one point of clarification that I thought was useful for us.
Yeah, and I'll just add to that, it's, the way it's structured is, it's, it's kind of meant to be a hold harmless. Like if nothing happened out here, you would continue to get whatever you're getting, and it accounts for that general reassessment of, let's assume nothing happened, what's attributable to just what would have happened anyway? And they try to get that back to the taxing entities, but then there's this, because there's this reinvestment, there's this cream on top, that's the increment that you can use to, to do other reinvestment and try to build this up. But I think the, the best, you know, kind of the way of putting it is, it's, it's meant to be like a hold harmless. You're supposed to can, you know, the special districts and the other entities are getting what they're getting today, and they're essentially getting what they would have got had nothing happened out there. So that's the idea at least. As far as the ordinance goes, there's really three main purposes going on, and I've highlighted the sections. The purpose is to make the necessary statutory findings, to set the boundaries, and then to submit the ballot questions. And so section one is your necessary legislative findings, that, that we find this to be necessary, attracts statutory language. Section three is what sets the boundaries, and as far as the boundaries go, there's a legal description and a map attached to the ordinance. Apologize, attached to the ordinance, and then I have, we have access to the map if we want to pull that up here. And then section four is what submits the formation and debt authorization question to the qualified electors. And so we could cover the ballot question, and then we can pull up the map and talk about that, if that works for the board. Okay, so the, kind of the meaty ballot question is your debt authorization, and this is, I'll, I'll start with this, it's a little quirky because. Tabor says, and the Secretary of State rules say, which ballot questions have to go first, and Tabor questions have to go before other matters. And so on your ballot, the debt authorization question is going to appear before the formation question, it's just what the law requires. And so this will be the first question that you see. The way we have it drafted, this first part is the contingency, since it will come before that formation question. So without increasing taxes and subject to the approval of the other ballot question, we put 2B in right now, because that's what number you would have in a coordinated election. It doesn't have to be that number, since this is your, your normal election, municipal election, so.
Let's do a different number.
Yeah, we can, we can do, we, we, we were told that wouldn't be ideal, and so we, we, that, that was flagged for us. And so that will be different when this comes before you on December 6th. And then, and then the operative Tabor language is right there after that. Again, the statute's a little weird, because it is, shall town of Frazier debt be increased? Because it's technically the municipality borrowing and pledging the TIF. Ultimately, the bonds are only payable from the TIF, and it's to be used on DDA projects. Why they didn't just choose to have the DDAs issue their own debt, I will never understand, but that's the way the statute's drafted. And so that's why you see shall town of Frazier debt be increased, and then it's on behalf of and for use by the DDA. The debt would be increased up to 25 million, and that's your principal amount. And so you could issue up to 25 million in bonds, loans, other obligations that are multiple fiscal year financial obligations. With the total repayment cost of not to exceed 74.2 million, we worked with Troy Bernburg on getting this number. A couple of things on that, right now, we're in a high interest rate environment, and given that tax increment's a little bit of a riskier security, basically bondholders or the bank. They're, they're relying on there to be development and there to be increment to get paid, so they bear higher interest rates than maybe a town, you know, bond would. So we, Troy accounted for some cushion there, and then the high interest rate environment. You're never going to hit that 74.2 million dollar number unless you issued the entire 25 million dollars at the max interest rate that we've modeled. But that leaves you a little bit of cushion, just in case. The other thing I'll say about that is, this is just your electoral authorization, any borrowing would come back to this board. And so if you don't like the interest rates, it said, you know, we don't like nine, we don't like eight, borrow at seven or less, or don't do it at all. You know, that's always the decisions that could be made in the future. This is just leaving you room so that you don't get in a situation where you have approved debt, but you can't issue it because the market is doing something funny, and otherwise the town thinks it's a good idea. That number can be adjusted, but that's where that came from. I think it assumes a 9% interest rate, and so that would be all of it at 9%, which is very unlikely to happen. And that's for obligations that are subject to Tabor. One weird thing the statute does is, to pledge the TIF at all, you have to have voter authority. Under Tabor, one of the exceptions of the election requirements is, if you have enough money sitting in your fund to pledge it for all principal and interest. So let's say you just have a, you know, two-year obligation, you say, hey, developer, you X, Y, and Z will pay you this amount, and you have the money sitting there. Under Tabor, you wouldn't have to vote that. Under the DDA statute, you still have to vote the pledge, and so that's why you see this additional language about, for obligations that are not subject to Tabor's voter requirements, we're not subject to the limit. And that's so that you're not burning through your electoral authority as you're kind of doing some of these small, one-off project type things. That center section, those are your purposes that you're authorized to issue debt for. As you'll see right now, it just mirrors what you're able to do under the statute, given that this is a 30 potential, you know, longer increment collection period. We want to leave some flexibility in there. If you would like some specific type things in there, we can always add them, but that's your authorized purposes section. And then the last section is your source of revenue that says, you know, the debt's going to be payable from tax increment. And then it just gives authorization for lots of different types of debt, and then it debrewses the revenue, since the municipality holds the, the revenue. And the DDA is its own Tabor district, there's a little confusion on whose base it goes to. So eliminating those problems, it debrewses that revenue stream. That's a lot on the Tabor question, any, any feedback, any questions, any concerns?
I, I can see the language sell, shell the town of Frazier. Increase their debt, being a real problem for people who won't read any further or.
Well, and again.
Turn off.
The electors are only those people in this defined district, it's not the whole town. So it'll be a lot easier to educate people. Yeah, so it should be a lot easier to educate people that are interested in it, and that's, that's going to be a, a whole different ballgame, but I anticipate that being easy. And that's that's going to be a a whole different ballgame, but I anticipate that being easier to do. And can we legally campaign? No, the town cannot.
The town can't, but we as individuals can.
You can't spend public money to advocate. If you're not spending any money, you're okay. As an individual board member, you're always entitled to your personal opinion. Right now, you could do whatever you want because you haven't set a ballot question. It's when you set the ballot question, so December sixth would be that date. That's when you can no longer spend public money to advocate. But in your personal capacity or your personal opinion, you're always welcome to express your First Amendment right on, you know, how you would like to see somebody vote or to educate them. You're also entitled to spend public money to distribute fact sheets. And so some of these things that are just information, you you can distribute those. And so this this being one of those points of, hey, this isn't, you know, the town will never be obligated for this. This is just payable from tax increment. The statute's weird, that's why it says this. Though, you know, that those are things, again, your voters, it's as much smaller pool. So you're you're targeting a smaller group of people and trying to have that conversation. But you can distribute factual information.
Sarah, can you talk a little bit about the website that we have on our page? The webpage we have on our website?
Yeah, so I worked with Sarah Wick, and we have added a page on our webpage. It's under the government section of the town of Frazier website. And it's just got some factual information on what a downtown development authority is. It kind of outlines the process we've gone through thus far to make the decision to explore this as a possible ballot measure. So it talks about the DDA committee. And then it's got some different links, a number of which we got from Downtown Colorado, Inc. And so we've had Bill at Downtown Colorado, Inc. and Butler and Snow look at it just to make sure it was all factual. And it's information that the town is able to share. So we are looking for ways to better get that out there so people know it's there because otherwise it is kind of hidden nowhere.
Okay.
I kind of like sticking with the statutory language because then that keeps us out of trouble.
Yeah, and your your bond counsel and attorneys like that as well. And we can definitely, you know, if you have feedback on on any of the language or anything, if you want to send that along to Michael and Sarah, we're we're happy to take that if you don't have anything tonight, just to make sure we bring back the questions you want to see. In the interest of time, I'll flip over to the other one. This one's very simple. Shall the Frazier Downtown Development Authority be organized pursuant to the statute and exercise the powers therein? And then it refers back to the ordinance for the boundaries. So that's a very simple, straightforward question. And so I think really your Tabor question's the going to be the big one. And then if I can get this pulled up here
Yeah, the map. The map. I have a question on the map.
Okay. How do you register to vote as like a manager of the business? How do you get a ballot?
So and and that's, it's a little bit of work that has to be done on the town side and running the election as far as identifying the eligible electors. So everybody will get the Tabor notice. There is an affidavit form that you fill out as a business showing that you appointed somebody to vote. But everybody in that area will get a Tabor notice, and then there'll be notice of election. And then you'll file an affidavit for your ability to vote, and that's how you get your ballot. And so we can walk through those steps a little bit more as we go, kind of get up the get up the vote as far as this is how you do it. Because it is a little bit more process. One of the things usually the counties will help with, they'll provide an assessment list of who owns businesses in that area. And and so that you kind of have a contact list to get going. But it's just, it's it'll be a lot of work on on the side of the town to to figure it out and try to make sure everyone gets a ballot that should.
And they'd mail it to like, say, somebody who lived in Grand Lake that was a manager somewhere, they would mail it to Grand Lake.
If you fill out your, yeah, if you fill out your affidavit and it's a mail ballot election, that's the way it would go. And so, yeah, you would mail the ballot there, and then they'd be responsible for mailing it back or dropping it off. And then these are the, these are the proposed boundaries. And so we worked with the town to get a legal description in these proposed boundaries. I'll defer questions a little bit to those who live in the town and know where things are at. But is there any questions or feedback on this?
I do, I have a question for staff. So why is the big piece of pie between Elk Creek Railroad tracks and County Road seventy two left out of this? Why isn't it included?
County Road seventy two.
That's that's Clark's big piece. At one point, you remember, it was going to be commercial, and then he said, I'm not putting in commercial there, I'm just going to put in residential. But it's that big quarter piece of pie.
Yeah, so.
Why was that not included? I'm curious.
I I'm happy to explain my my crazy methodology that I have in my head. So we did identify there are some areas next to like to the Baptist Church that will have some development. We did highlight the parcel on the southeast portion, kind of that foot that will have all that high density development for Clark.
Yeah, that's great.
Part of the discussion and and something that's I think Troy or or Bill may have have kind of kind of confirmed a a theory that I had had that if you have any anyone, and not to get into this more than we need to, but to have any any landowner that has larger portion of new development coming online that may be able to say, well, most of those increments coming from my developments. I want this. It kind of, it can make a good argument. So part of this includes his new development that we're going to see there for the Meyer lot two across the street. It does not include that boundary was kind of my thought process. We do have some good revenues that are kind of becoming in from a lot of new development within these boundaries that are shown. Within these boundaries, we feel a pretty solid level of confidence that we can do a twenty five million dollar principal for debt that we can meet these requirements without taking that on as well. So this is also about not creating too large of a boundary that we don't need. But maybe focusing the boundary on areas that I think makes sense that helps us achieve our goals that we're trying to get to as far as looking at twenty five million in revenues that can go towards debt or public improvements within those boundaries. That was my thought process.
So if if that were to be incorporated in the DDA, would that, you think that would act as incentive for the landowner to put in commercial, large commercial?
Commercial, I mean, you can always help that with negotiating affordable housing or some portion thereof or some deed restricted housing.
I'm thinking for tax. Something for a tax base. Because at one point, you know, they were talking about a, you know, a a large store back in there. But since everybody's buying online.
That's good information to know.
But anyway, and I know that it can be added later, but I was.
It can be added later. I thought it was an equitable approach as far as, you know, property owners within the boundaries.
Yep, then that makes sense.
So Troy, anything that you want to add to that?
Good evening, all. No, I I think you covered it, Michael.
Hi, Troy.
So hello.
Question. Does it have to be contiguous? Meaning the Michael.
To add it later.
Question for you, Michael.
Sir.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I said, does it have to be contiguous?
It does need to be contiguous. And if you want to add any portions to it, so like if Elk Creek Village had a good case to bring that on, you know, that that's, they can talk through that process a little bit. But it requires obviously the property owners to be in agreement, let lessees, anybody who's a voting member in there. And the DDA needs to be on board with that as well. So it's a mutual, you know, mutually agreed upon addition to the boundaries, but it does have to be contiguous.
So that option exists. About the Market Street buildings and the hospital and some other commercial businesses are going to go in that area. Shouldn't they be part of the DDA?
Kind of stopped somewhere.
I'm sorry, what?
They'd have to be a separate one? Because it wouldn't be able to make.
Well, I know, that's why I asked a question because I don't think you could gerrymander it, so it would.
And we've talked about that to some degree. I mean, the benefit that that like Clark has down there is he does have a metro district that has revenues that's going to go to. So he essentially has property taxes that will support his development and commercial development. So we didn't see any reason on trying to stretch this all the way down that way. And I don't know if we necessarily could. I don't know if Don or Troy could kind of speak to that a little bit. But having a downtown development authority, you have to have an argument that it is your downtown. And when you go stretch all the way to the southeastern part of Frazier, there's a ton of open space and residential that to get to that commercial. It seemed like it was a little fuzzy as far as state statutes allow us.
Yeah, so downtown development authority is to be formed in your central business district. And that's defined as the area within a municipality that traditionally has been the located the location of principal business, commercial, financial services and governmental center. And then it's zoned and used accordingly. And so there's got to be, as far as the area you're sweeping into this, you know, there you're making a legislative finding that that's what's included. I will check on the continuity requirement as far as contiguous boundaries because it does. It's a little fuzzier than other statutes on that point. And so I can check in on that one and get get in touch with you on that one, just in case that's not a requirement. When I was looking at the statute, it just says set the boundaries. And so it may be one of those that's up for interpretation.
One thing that I was.
Thinking about the town of Basalt. But when we were there, there's, you know, the town is like one part is the town and then like whatever thirty four miles down the road. The the old town Basalt, and that's they're they're not connected at all.
No, but that's because we were in Willets.
But that's, no, that's Basalt. It's considered Basalt. Anyway, I.
So they have a real estate transfer assessment that they use for Basalt. I was talking to the town manager of Basalt about that. So it's it's a it's a transfer when they sell condos or buildings. And they can negotiate one to three percent of that sale will go towards their their real estate transfer assessment. That's like a, you know, Rent Winter Park has a one percent real estate transfer assessment. And they can negotiate one to three percent based on what the developer is wanting for density or height increases or zoning variances and different things like that. So that's one, that's their main vehicle for funding that area around that art center at the Willets. So I don't believe they actually have a.
I don't know if that's a DDA, but it is kind of weird the way that town is set up that you have essentially two separate towns, but it's considered the same town of Basalt.
That's the statute does provide on later added property that it has to be adjacent to the existing boundaries. I need to check on the continuity requirement with the initial boundaries. But kind of given how that's written, it seems like they're contemplating that it's contiguous because it's like here's our central business district, this property beside it now makes sense. And so I I think that's probably been the interpretation, even if it's not explicit.
Out of curiosity, would it be worthwhile including the lion's ponds? Not because they aren't necessarily going to make any money for us, but then they could use to financing to make improvements?
That's going to ask the same thing.
We can, we can include that.
We did have that discussion and talked about it, and there was a couple of different perspectives. One, we're not going to be getting increment from the lion's pond, but it would allow us to fund features there. But I think the thought was there was also enough to do in the downtown area and with affordable housing and things like that that we could seek out other funding sources for the lion's pond. And then I think another thought, and I could let the the experts speak more to this was whether or not that was, on the one hand, it's adjacent to the downtown area. So some thought that was justifiable, but it is more of a question since it's open space versus like a business district.
If you go down that part, we got to grab on to as well.
So thinking about the voter base, business owners, leases, they want to see the improvements in the downtown.
Stick with downtown.
I think we have revenues to support the lion's ponds. This was kind of, we we talked about this, I think, pretty good in depth. And you know, this isn't going to be a silver bullet to pay for all the town's projects. We did consider including the lion's ponds just because of the master plan that we do have for the site. But for all the needs that we have downtown and with the the main focus of this to the for the ballot initiatives, the voters and the education, I think it made sense to have the focus on the downtown corridor to improve transit and parking and parking structures and traffic flow and off highway transportation options and beautification and streetscaping and whatever projects we want to negotiate for deed restricted properties with new development. I just I think the focus was more that avenue that would be supported by a voter base and complimentary to kind of the the primary purpose of a downtown development authority. But you know, it is contiguous. If if that was ever something to be visited in the future, we could look at bringing that on. But as far as the political climate of this, we thought that it probably best to leave that out, but that's, I think that was primarily my opinion.
Okay. Some of us like to include like its pods of just thinking about events and different things that are done there that do I think are economic drivers. I think you can't make that justification.
Yeah, so I mean, I think we could argue it either way. But I think it can always be added later. Do you want to include that in the first round? That's my, not saying that that's a perfect methodology, but that's, that was my processing for this.
Troy or Bill, did either of you want to add anything about boundaries or just anything about Dalton's presentation or the questions that have come up?
No, I I I think, you know, I I supported the initial thought of excluding the ponds just because they are open space and they, you know, they're not going to be revenue generating properties, if at all. The point about making improvements to them is certainly a valid one and something to consider certainly as opposed to the other property. I think, you know, based on the nature of what that development might be in the future, we we have an ability to add that property in relatively with an administrative steps or series of steps. So for me, I I I'm okay with the boundaries as they are, but certainly it's it's not my decision. So but I certainly support kind of the Michael's and the town's approach initially with it.
I mean, there are some commercial properties along there, along forty. The liquor store, the fishing store, the whatever that other.
It does kind of open a can of worms, though. We do want to focus on this downtown area.
We can always add it later.
The the dollars were, they're not huge. From my notes, Michael projected the increment initially five hundred to seven hundred fifty thousand a year. It's not huge. It'll take time for it to get big. So that's just to keep that in perspective. It'll be a slow build.
Yeah, but it's, you're talking about a thirty year horizon.
Right, and down the road.
You know, first five years are going to be slow, right? But then it's going to pick up.
Yeah, well, and one of my two cents, though, on large for small boundaries is increment is based off the entire area. So the assessor doesn't say, okay, here's your increment from the the little triangle here. Here's your increment from this property. They look at the whole area and say, did the assessed value on the whole area go up? Okay, here's how much it went up. And so the more you include in there, as we talked earlier, you know, most property does generally get increase in value. But if you include include property that's stagnant or not, or property value is actually going down, it could detract from the increment that's happening. You know, downtown's generating increment, but over here we had something happen and assessed values dropping, and now we don't have increment. And so that is one thing that kind of pulls against doing a large area is because the increment is based off the whole area. So you want to make sure you're concentrating a little bit where the generation is with the idea of where do we also want to do the improvements? You can add them later, that helps. There's other tools available for different types of projects, and so maybe that's appropriate. But that's one thing to weigh, because I've seen a municipality do a TIF district, it was an urban renewal, and they covered the entire town. And then they're trying to do projects, and it's like, how do you attribute increment over here if value is going down over here? There's no money. And so it's one thing to keep.
I don't know, the property value is going down.
And that's fair.
And well, and increment.
It's almost shrimp over there.
Open space goes there.
Yeah. Right, so that stays the same, but it's, oh, God, that was just like training us up. I think I did. So Clayton's court, the value is like there. Nothing. But as soon as we start getting development, that valuation is going to go up. So on these lands that are vacant, are are ready to are going to be developed sometime in the next five to ten years, that's where we'll see our big income, not on the existing businesses.
Yeah, makes sense. But it is, I mean, this, in the future, it's two property owners to include liquor store. Yeah, makes sense, but it is, I mean, this in the future, it's two property owners to include liquor store. Right, is that right? That was right there next to it? There in the southeast.
Yeah, there's three lots up in the.
Yeah, I don't know what else can be developed. They were going to put in some condos there.
Yeah.
That hasn't happened.
No, they sold it and.
That's commercial, that's commercial land, right?
Condos can be considered commercial.
Yeah, but it could, they could put a business in there too.
Yeah, I think we stick with the boundary.
I like it the way it is too.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it makes with, yeah, with property values not increasing in those areas, I think. Yeah, we stick to what we. Uh, I would, I would say we don't necessarily need to include Victoria Village, but um, I guess there will be a coffee shop in there.
Well, but it's so that we can spend money on it, so we can use these increment dollars.
Right.
To pay for their house, help paper housing.
I know, same principles the park. Well, we'll make real.
And then we can spend money on it, because you can only spend money on the district.
Right.
So in terms of next steps, we will be bringing the ballot language and ordinance back on December sixth for a vote. Um, whether you want to approve or not approve. Um, that is really our last scheduled board meeting before we would need to submit ballot language for that April election. So the hope is we can address any questions, concerns, have any discussion now so that we can have. Something prepared that's been discussed and you're you're ready to vote one way or another on on December sixth, ideally.
I mean, it sounds like this, it's essentially statutory language, and so the only thing that we could change is the boundary and the. The numbers, the twenty-five million and stuff.
Yeah, really in the taper, the taper question, you can always, um, there's the amounts in there, and so that that's something that's for a conversation. On the purposes, um, you can, that language can be tweaked, but right now it's as broad as possible so that um you can do what the DDA Act allows. Otherwise, it's kind of dictated by statute or taper, um, so.
So the twenty-five million, was that statute or is that just a number we came up with?
That's a number we came up with uh working with staff and working with Troy um to try to think of, you know. What are the, what are the needs we have, uh, what's palatable, what what can we, what can we do enough projects with, but we're not asking for, you know. Um, so much that voters want to prove it, and that's the number we left uh landed on. Um, Michael, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but that's that's how we got there.
Yeah, I just kind of looked at public improvements with price tags. You know, parking garage, I hope we can do some some parking uh fees in lieu of parking that can go towards the parking garage structure. Uh, land acquisition is going to be a big part of this too. As far as providing for, you know, parks, um, and um, just looking at some ba- some improvements, I thought, you know. Looking at this area and what is going to be built and what is going to come online, we said twenty-five million was, I think, a reasonable number to go with. It wasn't too much.
Yeah, and psychologically, it's, I think it's palatable.
So trying to set this up for success.
Yeah.
Um, with the voter base, that's, I think, a reasonable approach for expenditures. It's not, you know, we're not asking for a hundred million.
So basically. We're kind of happy with it, but questioning the boundaries. But we should have the boundary, you'd like the boundaries tonight. So they're ready for the next, is that what I understand, Sarah? I'm okay with the boundaries the way they are.
I like them.
Yeah, if you did want any changes, we'd want to hammer that out.
The only, the only thing that I have a note for is um to include include the county road seventy-two right of way boundary west of Myerslot Two. And up by Victoria Village, include that chunk of Highway forty so that we have an annexation of the pole yard in those areas, we're not dealing with C dot.
Great.
Or contiguous boundary.
That makes sense and easier to have them in right away and then it's available, um.
And I'll just add with the numbers for the debt authorization, I think an important piece is going to be when communicating with the special electors. Making sure that that kind of front and center is this idea that we're not going to turn around and try to take out twenty-five million dollars in bonds tomorrow. That this is just a maximum authorization over the life of the DDA, um, so that you don't have to continuously go back to the voters. Um, but it's, you know, by no means a debt number that we're looking to to see anytime soon if ever.
And I think a- along with that is we're not issuing it all today and it's no new taxes, this is existing levies. It's just going different places. As assessed value goes up, yes, you pay more based off those same levies, but it's not a new levy. It's no, it's not a new tax, it's taking what's existing, applied to your current base, applied to the new base. You know, if there's sales tax increment in there, it's new sales tax, but it's not, it's not a, not an increase, it's just where it goes.
Michael, can you tell me where you're talking about on seventy-two? I understand the annexation, foyer part, you you mean, but where?
Just west of the Murdoch Center to include that right of way. So that if if there was a good justification to bring in Elk Creek, I mean, I guess we already own the property. So then, so maybe that's not as important as the as the C dot right of way, that's within the town boundaries there west of Victoria Village, so. Maybe that's not as much of a concern.
Behind the Murdoch Center?
Yep. To the, you scroll down there. You kind of go down.
So just um.
Yeah, that 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 one right there.
This little tiny one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just.
So just moving it over so it covers.
I guess it's it's. It's not a C dot right of way, it's just a town right of way, so actually that would be.
Oh, I thought you meant. This whole thing right here?
No, 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 that's.
Just this? Okay.
Since we're all going to be asking C dot to let us bring their, I guess, right of way within this boundary, since their. Their property already goes through it.
Okay.
Makes certain sense to have that portion west of.
Yeah, I got you. I just didn't know what you're talking about. Okay, makes sense.
Okay, so we're set now?
Yeah.
And that's all you need, Sarah?
Yes, yes, unless Troy or Bill or Dalton have anything else to say, I think we're good.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Trey and Bill and Dalton.
Thanks, thanks, Bill.
Of course, happy to do it.
Thank you.
Take care, y'all.
Have a good evening. On Thanksgiving.
Yes, you too.
Bill, can you just say control your destiny before you sign off?
Control your destiny?
Thank you.
Be good, y'all.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, Sarah, um, ordinance number twenty-three amending chapter two, article two. Regarding us.
So this ordinance is for a code change related to. Um, just kind of formalizing the ability of the board to be able to offer economic incentives in the future. Or to allow property owners the ability to pay plant investment fees over time, um. We are looking to bring on December sixth to the board agreements that were previously discussed with Bison Investment for the plant investment fees. Birdie Lounge and Simple Coffee for the rebate of the sales tax. Um, so this is just formalizing within our code, the ability for the board to do this, because it's currently is not in our code. Otherwise.
I'm sorry, where where are you? Because I'm lost. I thought we were in a ordinance, uh, which one?
Yeah, ordinance number five zero three.
So regarding.
Very bottom of the page.
Yeah, so if you go to the part in bold, um, most of this under chapter two is what's currently in the code. And then at the top of the second page, section D. Notwithstanding any other provision of this code, the Board of Trustees may negotiate an award to qualifying taxpayers, certain incentive payments or credits in accordance with. Colorado Revised Statute three one one five nine zero three and Colorado Revised Statutes three nine three zero one zero five. It may allow property owners the ability to pay plant investment fees over time.
It's, I think it's in your right hand.
Yeah, but. Chapter two parts talking about Board of Trustees, terms, authority, qualifications, vacancies. None of that's, none of that's changing, right? That's.
No.
That just happens to be in there. Seems like that's misplaced.
Uh, you know, Louis, I have the same thought when I was looking at this, that um originally we talked about. It was suggested that we put this under the powers that EDAC have or the description of EDAC. Um, but given that EDAC just makes recommendations to the board and you can decide to follow or not those recommendations. It made more sense to place this directly under the authority of the board, um. But you are correct that we don't really outline the other authorities and powers of the board here.
From talking about the terms and what to do. If, you know, we need to replace somebody and then it shifts into this other, I mean, it doesn't really fit.
There's nowhere else in our code that I've seen where it specifically outlines. Board authorities, obviously. Um, so I don't know if that's something that we need to address in the future.
And the other question I had about this is, you know, what about the mayor? This doesn't even address the mayor, what happens if the mayor was to, you know, resign?
That that's.
That's a whole difference. That's a whole different thing.
And so is the ability to provide economic incentives, we're just codifying that part. The main part that we're really adding just legally is that the board has the power to grant um. Plant investment fees to be spread over time, to be paid over time. We're not rebating any of the plant investment fees, so with the the approval of Bison's economic incentives for thoughts of on Maine. Part of that incentive was, you know, the five percent sales tax or the four percent or the five percent sales tax uh rebate over a five-year period. And the plant investment fees for that building to be spread over two years evenly. That's just the part that we need to have codified. We just put this in there so it just, it's transparent in our code that the board can provide economic incentives. Not allowed to by state statutes, but we thought it was a good.
Well, no, I don't have a problem with that, but just it's just misplaced. The way it is, the section two dash two dash ten. Is talking about something completely different.
But it does say Board of Trustees, terms, authority. Qualifications and vacancies. That's one of our, the authorities that we have. Is to do that.
I'm with you, Louis. It looks like it's in a weird place.
Right.
It's not in a good.
But we don't see like the.
Nowhere else.
Index either, we don't know what, why it's that way. We don't have the whole story.
Yeah, that authority's mentioned, so.
I I understand your fascination, but it's about the best, worst place to put it.
Elsewhere in the code.
Where where is um, the sort of explanation of the, like, what what? Is to happen if the mayor was in, it's just so the Board of Trustees doesn't have mayor included in here in, in terms of. Say Philip resigned, then what do we do? I mean, what would be the um next steps? Would it go to an election? Would we appoint?
What, in order to make this decision?
Is that in code anywhere?
That has nothing to do with with the authorities of the board. If the mayor resigns, that is written in the state statutes of exactly what we have to do, it's not codified in our code and it's not really required to be.
Right, and and we've looked into that, Louis, and it did.
Yeah.
Anton, that's exactly right. Um, so it's not, this isn't the place where you're going to find that information, it's the state statute.
So we're stat, with being a statutory town, we revert to state statutes, anything that we adopt in our code provides more restrictive or clarification. What we do as a municipality, but we still revert to all the state statutes.
But so, but you codified what what goes on with the Board of Trustees, does that need to be in there then? Is that covered by the state statutes?
For a vacancy for the mayor?
Vacancies, I mean, all this A B, uh, A, B and C that's in here.
Not necessarily, so.
Is this different? Is it more restricted, less restricted than this state statute?
So. Uh, uh, an ordinance can always be done if it doesn't conflict or is more or is less restrictive than a state statute in the same section. So that's why you might just see bits and pieces here that seem cobbled together and and don't make sense as a standalone.
Related.
Right.
Well, Louis, I don't have it in front of me, so I hesitate to say this, but if memory serves me when I was looking at this section. Like, there is a section on the mayor. I just, I think it comes right before this section, but again, I don't have it in front of me, so I.
But that's not what we're talking about, so.
If if the mayor resigns, we know exactly.
Okay.
Uh, we will, we will provide you with all those options very clearly, we will.
Can can, can you share that with the board where where that is in the town code ordinance?
Well, state statutes, we can, we can actually.
Oh, say that.
Walk through that process, it's like.
So for this, like right now, it says elsewhere in our code that plant investment fees must be paid at certificate of occupancy. So this is providing another spot in the code that gives you the power as an economic incentive to allow them to pay that over two years. Versus defaulting to what's in the code saying they have to pay it at certificate of occupancy.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that, it just, it just really.
Weird.
Does not fit in in this, but you know, if that's the best place for it, then so be it, I guess.
I mean, the only other alternative would be to make a separate code provision altogether for just that standalone item. But I don't think that's necessary.
I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you.
Uh, to approve ordinance number five oh three, amending chapter two, article two regarding Board of Trustees.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, we move on to ordinance number five oh two, amending chapter six, article four regarding alcoholic beverages. Antonet.
So this is kind of a continued discussion that we've had um previously regarding changes to the Colorado statutes. Um, so this allows us to change our code, um, the Senate did pass Ha- House Bill twenty-two fourteen fifteen regarding manager registration. In in that bill, um, what it did was it requires um. All new managers of liquor license holders to be registered with the town and with the state within thirty days of that change of that manager. Um, has to be be reported, um, and that is for all liquor license types. Um, I made a couple of mistakes in my memo and be honest with you, um, so that's required for any liquor license type. But the four liquor license types that I've listed here specifically, they're required to pay a fee. But not all licenses have to pay a fee for that manager registration. Um, and the exception to to that that have to pay the fees are hotel and restaurant tavern lodging and entertainment licenses. They're the ones that have to pay a thirty-dollar fee to the state and to the local licensing authority. Um, and that House Bill also removed the requirement for the background check for any new registered managers. So that we don't have to do that anymore, um, for those, for any liquor license type.
And that's the state mandate anyway.
That's a state mandate.
Do it or not.
Correct, that's it's, that's a, that's a change, so I want to change our code to match that of the change in that House Bill. And then the other, the other part of this change is, is so back um in twenty twenty-one. The board made the amendment to our code that made our municipal judge be the person that would have to act. If there are any violations to the liquor code, um, it would go before uh our municipal judge instead of the Board of Trustees. So by having the municipal judge be the one to have to look over violations rather than the Board of Trustees. It really, um, there's no reason if there's a violation that that. That renewal would now need to come before the board because they have violations, because the municipal judge will now. Look at those violations rather than the Board of Trustees. So by remove, so by having the judge now be the person that looks at the violations rather than the trustees. It allows the town clerk to administratively approve those renewals rather than having to come before the board. With those violations on those renewals. So I've proposed changing that, um, so in the, in the code, changing the. Um, the part part of the code that says, um. Okay, so I changed two things, so I'm six four seven disciplinary actions, which is what we've, what we had changed in that April twenty twenty-one. Um, so I changed it to say the municipal court acting as the authority for all disciplinary actions may suspend. Or revoke a license for violations upon finding that the license has failed to comply with. Um, this article and the Colorado liquor rules and, and liquor, um, Colorado liquor code. So I've kind of beefed that up a little bit. So it wasn't just the article of our code, but it's actually the actual statutes also, um, violations of that code. Um, now it still gives the town clerk to um. Bring before the board. If I feel there would be a reason that a renewal would not. Administratively need to be approved, but still would need to be brought before the board. Still gives me the, the town clerk the authority to bring a renewal before the board. Should it be something else? I, I don't have an example of what that would be. Um, and if that would be the case, that it would need to come before the board for that renewal, that it should be done in a public hearing. It gives the licensee and the public that the opportunity to um, come before the board and, and give any sort of presentation.
But it takes a long time to do that with the state because the state takes forever. So if somebody was in a hurry. And like they wanted to get a liquor license in like three months, it'd be almost impossible.
So a new liquor license is totally different than a renewal. A, a new liquor license, yeah, the state can take. Um, they say thirty, it's actually sixty to ninety days to approve a new liquor license. A renewal, they say should take, I believe it's, it's should, it's like two to three weeks, but I see them take up to four months. We have no control over what the state's timeline is. But once a renewal is in process, it has been, as long as it's been presented to the town clerk before the expiration date, they're considered in good standing. And if it's expired, um, when it is presented to the town clerk, there are additional fees that have to be paid.
Right.
Um, but it can be considered still and within good standing as long as it's not, once you hit the six month, a hundred and eighty days, you gotta start over. You have to apply for a whole new license.
Do you have to pu- post like public notice for a renewal though?
No, it, it really removes that requirement. It allows the town clerk to administratively renew a liquor license, even if there are violations. Because there's violations should be going to the municipal judge.
Right.
Yeah.
So they'll go to municipal judge and then you'll approve or deny?
And then the municipal judge has the right to approve or deny. Um, once there's a, 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 a hearing, maybe Kent can speak to that a little bit better.
The guy in, in Winter Park, correct?
Correct.
Would the judge be able to like impose a fine and stuff like that? Or is it just a yes or no? So they could.
I think the judge can impose the, and that's happened here. The judge can impose a fine. The judge can um, cause you to not be renewed. They can cause you to um. Cause your uh, business to have to close for a period of time. It's really whatever the judge decides that that judgment is.
I know, I kind of like, I mean, they would, I just felt like it was a little more personal, like with the tin cup thing, like we put faith in them and then they pulled through, you know?
That's, that's.
But it would be just like a hard line, like.
I'm with you on that.
They don't, the judge doesn't know these people. They're.
But do we have a choice?
It's already written in our code.
Yeah.
We've already changed that code to give that power to our municipal judge.
You beat that horse.
Yeah, unless you want to take that back out of the code.
Except for our politics and some things.
It, it does, you know, and it, it prevents, you know, us from having to have a public hearing if a liquor license has. One violation that one person was over served. I mean, that's a, that's, it's a bar, it's a liquor license. Of course, you don't want that to happen, but it's a minor thing. Um, that do we, does the board want to review those renewals for a very minor infraction? And have a public hearing for those.
And no more background checks too?
Correct.
For the, that's the state?
That's the state. Correct. It, for a new liquor license, you still have to do a background check, but not for the registration of a new manager.
Streamline, streamline it.
So do I get a background check every year? Like is it the owner, the. The licensee still gets one every year? It's just the manager, but usually the licensee is the manager.
Often it is the same person, yes. So if there's a, I, and it's, it's interesting that you say that. So if there's a new manager registered, um. They don't get a background check, but we do do an, we do an annual background check on licensees. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve. Um, ordinance five oh two, amending. Chapter six, article four regarding alcoholic beverage.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Antonette. And then the next one is easy because it's been postponed. And now we are up to updates. Anybody have any updates?
Well, I, it's not a, it's not a scheduled update, but it's something to talk about and it's how we changed our language that we discussed. If you look at the Willow's apartment, it's been proven now that there is no need for affordable housing in Frazier. There is however, a need for workforce housing. And we should change our language and start talking about workforce housing instead of affordable. Affordable's thirty percent. Fifty percent of AMI, which we don't have in this town. Because.
You can't live here.
So we need to be, I believe we need to be more cautious about saying affordable housing and really focusing on workforce housing. That's the only.
Well.
It's sort of semantics.
It is semantics.
You know, it's no longer the Baptist church either. It's valley life, this F I I.
Sound semantics until you go into the legal legalities of affordable housing, life tech, hut housing.
I'd just say. Even that was harder to fill.
Yeah.
I have something.
Okay.
Today is Jerry Roswell Day.
Yes.
Back in two thousand fourteen, the governor Hickenlooper established this as Jerry Roswell Day. And if those of you didn't know him, he was president of Park River. He started the Danny Foundation. Is only doing a lot of wonderful things for the city streets. Anyway.
A very wonderful man.
Thank you, Jerry.
I, actually, what you just said, Parnell, reminded me of something looking, and I didn't bring this up earlier, but this. Service contract with um, the Northwest Cog. It talks about illegal aliens. I thought that language was sort of stripping from. It's semantics, right? But didn't we take that out and that's, that's in here?
Okay.
Yeah, it should be out.
Documented?
Yeah, the state, that was a state thing.
Good catch.
We had to.
We talked about that last year. It was a state step.
Right, right. We don't have a choice, but that, that needs to be changed, right? Yeah.
The state will have to change it.
Few times ago.
I apologize. Um, Northwest Cog provided that contract, so.
You can tell them.
Yeah.
Yeah, inform them that they have old language, but.
Good catch. You have anything?
Michael?
We might have aliens here in Frazier.
We got the grant for uh, that stormwater trip. It's, that's great. Um, it's really going to help us with improving the health of the Frazier River. But also we did get the official word letter for the Clayton Court grant too for one point five billion, so.
That's awesome. That is great.
So um, Sarah and Paul are diving in a lot into different things like geothermal, but uh, getting that RFP out soon. Decide to see what that design looks like. Likely be looking at some workshops or design a playing court and what that downtown world will look like on playing court. So it's exciting.
So we had talked about the pedestrian walkway just there on Highway forty that goes. The zags between Doc Suzie and Frazier over Highway forty that we just talked about. And we were kind of saying that there might have been approved in the budget for flashing lights. Can we check and make sure?
So Paul, I, I have talked.
See if that was or not.
Four times this year about flashing lights. They are working um, with C dot to get that approval.
Yeah.
It's just.
And it has to be a C dot thing right there?
Yeah.
It is a C dot thing. Um, so it looks like it can be done and we're just, we're going to get it done first.
Okay, so we don't have to bring it up again. It's just going to happen one day. We're going to be like, ah, flashing lights.
Can we also address the speed limit through Frazier? Because it's thirty-five currently through there. That means people go forty, forty-five, fifty. Through that section. It's just dangerous.
I think.
Right?
Both the town of Frazier and Winter Park combined and we did a letter to see.
If you have potholes, you'll die.
We can get that lowered.
You're talking specifically about uh, the stretch between Safeway and the fire.
Safeway and, and Victoria Village, right? The middle of downtown, really.
I don't see that, but. I never, I barely ever cross the highway and just on the west side.
Try to come off of Muse. Three o'clock in the morning, see how that looks up.
Muse, where?
I mean, sorry, uh, yeah, a bunch of muse.
Muse?
Doc Suzie or uh, Easton.
Yeah.
Try to get off the highway, try to get onto the highway on Easton at eight o'clock.
You can go.
The cars come so fast, they're doing.
Yeah?
Trucks, trucks, they can't stop.
Okay, yeah.
All right, um, I'd like to make a motion to enter an executive session. For conference with town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS section two four six four oh two. Four B, for the purpose of determining positions related to matters that are subject to negotiations. Developing strategy for negotiations and or instructing negotiators. Under CRS section twenty-four six four oh two four E. Regarding litigation to include town manager Michael Brock, town attorney, uh, Ken Whitmore.
No, I can't.
Oh, I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we're going to do the other one, right? Katie, you want to make a motion for the other one?
Oh, I thought you were talking to her. I move to enter into an executive session for discussions on the personal matter under CRS section two four six four two. Four. I, I. Okay. And not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session, town manager contract. Include manager Michael Brock and attorney Kent Whitmore.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Um, just a question. Are we coming back or is this the end of the?
We're coming back.
Yeah, we're coming back.
Okay.
So I don't know. Is there anyone online? Doesn't really matter then, right? So, but we'll do the two executive sessions. Come back, change your recording in between, come back and then work on Michael's contract.
For the resolution, if you want to. And just to point out, the first executive session does not need to be recorded because it'll be privileged.
Okay. Really? Okay. It's good to have you back. Okay, so now we're back.
Now we're back.
Now we're back and we have discussion and possible action regarding the town manager's contract. Which we all received in our packet. And um. I can't move anything.
I'd like to make a motion to um. Approve Michael Brock's new contract for next year, an extension, a extension of your contract next year with a six point seven percent. Increase in salary based on performance.
Cross living and longevity. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, so.
I moved to a joint.
I'll second.
Do we need a voice stamp? Who moved to your joint, Brian?
I did. I'm thirty-five.
All right.
I'm forty-five.
That, that was so special and so much we appreciated it. And with the holidays coming on.
Yeah.
They just got over and.
We'll disperse that here um, hopefully back before Black Friday.